Okay, welcome to the Monroe Planning Commission. This is the regular meeting for Monday, November 27th. It's 7:01 PM. Hannah, would you call, roll please?
Yes. Commissioners present and establishing a forum. Commissioners Blair, Bull, Dawkins, Lewis, Lockhart, Nugent, and Walker.
Thank you. Okay, wanted to let all of our commissioners that are joining us via Zoom know that we, the city has been kind enough to purchase iPads, nice sized iPads for us, so that we're no longer printing our commission packet using electronic device for chewing. So when you are able to join us, the room is lit. Item number three, public comments. So we set aside three minutes for each public speaker to talk about anything they would like. And if we have anybody in Zoom that has a hand up, yeah?
We do have someone that has their hand up. I'm going to give you the ability to speak just a moment.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name's Bob Petrino. I'm a Monroe resident. I live at 19591 Rayner View Road Southeast. It's my first planning commission meeting that I've attended in Monroe. Hi, everybody. And it's not my first planning commission meeting. I had, I have 10 years of planning commission experience in the city I lived in, in California, a city called San Ramon, California. And I was lucky enough to spend 10 years on that commission. I was chair twice. So first of all, I want to thank you, say thank you to the commissioners and thank you to staff. Very few understand how much work planning commissioners do. And even fewer understand how much work planning staff, professional staff have to do. And I will tell you from a community, as a citizen of this wonderful city, I thank you for all the work that you do. I live in the St. Clair Heights neighborhood. And particularly those of us that live on Rayner View were greatly impacted and are currently still impacted by the Cooper Ridge project, particularly the pre-construction work that was going on, what I call the dirt moving in the street, the sporing of the streets, although it was put together, put back together very nicely. We, we were impacted by daily noise, vibrations, odors. But occasionally we were entertained by great mariachi music coming from the development. So that was, that was a plus. The thing that distressed me most was that it basically took away our full summer of enjoyment outside on our deck. We lived 20 feet away from all that work that was going on. We could not sit outside and enjoy our summer days. And I worked from home. And so the noise and the vibration constantly interrupted my meetings. So the first question I have, do we consider the impacts of development on the neighbors? And to dovetail into that, my neighbors and I, we did not know about the Cooper Ridge development until it started. At least we don't remember getting any notifications from the city. So the question I ask is maybe we need to revisit our notification processes. I know when, when I was on the planning commission in San Ramon, we, we had to revise ours. And we went to as far as putting door hangers on any, any person that lived within 300 feet of impacted development or an impacted land use application. Didn't have to be development. It could be, maybe someone wanted to put a daycare in their house. We notified everyone within 300 feet. Perhaps we need to think about that. Again, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments.
No problem.
Okay. Do you see any other viewers put their hands right, Tim?
No.
No? Staff located, Vaughn?
Yep.
Awesome. Item number four, approval of minutes. Does everyone have a chance to review the minutes and edits?
I move that we approve the minutes from the October 23rd, 2023 meeting.
A second?
A second motion.
Thanks, Janelle. Commissioners in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Going to move on to section seven, new business now. We have an item of business, Hannah, related to meeting times, dates. Just confirming that times and dates are the same.
Correct, yeah. So a little background on this. At the November 14th city council meeting, they approved ordinance 021-2023, which amends the Monroe municipal code to dictate that each board, commission, and committee has to take official action to designate the regular meeting date and time. So even though we have it in our standard procedures, we do have to have an actual order. That's in your agenda packet. And yeah, I have a motion on your agenda bill that just needs to go forward for this to get signed up.
Okay.
I move that we order the setting of the planning commission's regular meeting day and time as the second and fourth Monday of each month from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Second motion?
It's Jay. Commissioners in favor, please say aye.
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 The vote? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 7.2. Okay, it looks like you put together a large volume of varied information. This is fantastic.
So, thank you. Tonight, we are going to introduce you to the economic development element. Although, I'm going to go to the next slide. So it is technically a mandatory element in the Growth Management Act. However, it is still an optional element because the state has not provided funding for it. The city of Monroe, as I've noted in the packet, really feels that economic development is important for this community. And it's actually been in the city's comprehensive plan back to, was that 1994, I think? And so every 10 years that we've been doing the updates, the city has continued to include this. And so just for your information, this is the slide that gives you the GMA specific goal, which is encourage economic development throughout the state that is consistent with adopted comprehensive plans. Promote economic opportunity for all citizens of the state, especially for unemployed and disadvantaged persons. Promote the retention and expansion of existing businesses and recruitment of new businesses. Recognize regional differences impacting economic development opportunities and encourage growth in areas experiencing insufficient economic growth, all within the capacities of the state's natural resources, public services, and public facilities. And so my way of thinking is Monroe is ahead of the game. We've already been doing this work. And I think some of the concepts in here are also captured by Imagine Monroe. So I did want to provide you just what the goal is. The next slide gives you the element requirements, which I think is really interesting because all of the other elements are very specific. You have to do an inventory. You have to do capacity analysis. And so for the element requirements, it's a little bit more global, I guess. Establish local goals, policies, objectives, and provisions for economic growth and vitality and a high quality of life. A city that has chosen to be a residential community, so no real commercial industry and/or industry is exempt from this requirement. That's all. So the city really has a lot of flexibility and what they find is important. And so in the existing 2015, 2035, we actually have a goal and several policies included in chapter two. And goal number three is very specific to economic development. And I'm not going to read this one for you, but we have done what is required in the element. And so some of the sample policies, I didn't, we'll go to the next slide. Just gave some examples. Ensure the amount of land zoned for business and industrial use is adequate to meet policy objectives and employment forecasts. This ties back to the meeting that you had just a few weeks ago, looking at the land use scenarios. And I think that Alex had shared with you, we don't have, we're pretty confident that we are going to be able to accommodate our housing and population. We're not so confident about meeting our job numbers. And so that's why we're really looking at where are there other areas that we might be able to do a mixed use or intensify the type of use that we're already having. Another one is identify economic sectors within Monroe where opportunity to create additional jobs might exist and employment strategies to attract such jobs. So if you go into the actual chapter and the appendices, some of that data from 2013 identifies there is growth potential in the medical industry or healthcare services as well as manufacturing. So there, there's room to grow in Monroe. And the area around the hospital, that was actually re-identified or the land use classification was changed to mixed use medically, trying to encourage more of that type of job growth. And that's actually the next bullet here that talks about the health services district on 179th. And then again, tying back to our capital facilities, do we have enough water? Do we have enough sewer? Are we looking at transportation to serve these future businesses? Next slide. So on this one, I just wanted to show you some of the, the element itself is a summary of appendix D. And it's a lot of data. It talks about the population. It talks about income levels. It talks about educational attainment, how many houses are owned, rented. And so the graph on the left is actually a statewide graph talking about the type of industries that have been increasing in Washington state. And then again, this data is from 2013. This is in the current plan. And then where we're losing ground on jobs. The slide on the right is for Monroe specifically. And again, it's showing about the areas where we have opportunity. And again, that's for medical and manufacturing.
Good question.
Yes.
The, the change to that land, that happens prior to the school district leasing building across the street from Evergreen Drive? Or did it happen after they leased it?
I will have to look into that. I was not here when that happened. The plan was adopted in 2015. I'm not sure when the school district.
Yeah, it goes, I think it goes after that. Yeah. And so, so one thing to look at too with that is that we still have limitations. We can't fully limit what landlords do when they own the buildings, right? Because I know the intention with that area and that, and stuff was to keep that with the medical designation. But with the school district in that building, obviously it's probably not going to be a place for the medical job growth, at least in that specific building within that area.
The interesting thing, when I was here in 2005, that's where my doctor's office was. It was a medical office. So you know, you do have to be a little bit creative and the zoning does allow for different types of uses. It's not 100% medical, but you are absolutely right.
It was just one example because it's, it's a big use that's right there. So I know there's probably plenty of other examples of similar situation in the area.
The city would be homeless if we didn't allow the city to be in that medical building.
Yes.
Right? So.
And we, we actually had to get a conditional use permit.
Yeah.
And that's how they're trying to limit non-medical specific businesses. We weren't outright permitted. Excellent question. Next slide. So I think this one is fascinating to me. So what this chart is, well, first off, I want to step back. Monroe has more jobs than total employed residents. Think about that. We have more jobs in our community than employed residents. What this chart is getting at, or this chart, most of the employed residents in Monroe travel out of the community for work. And most of the people that work in Monroe are coming from somewhere else. I just think that's super interesting. And the mix of jobs are also different. So people who are, let's see here. The people who are traveling into the city are doing more of public administration, education, accommodation, food services. Monroe residents are high tech finance. It's just so interesting to me that we have this mix in our community. To me, there's like, is there a way that we can better that balance of housing and jobs that people are, so you're not having to do that travel? Okay, next slide. Thank you. So then again, as I mentioned earlier, the appendix D has all of the details. And it has the 2013 vision of the draft document that I sent you with your packets. And it talks about, again, demographics, education, income, household sold, number of building permits. And then it's projecting where, or it looks at like retail leakage. It's a term where people are going elsewhere because they cannot buy the things that they want in the community. So there's that type of information. And then again, the type of growth industries are also included. And it's still healthcare, this is all from 2013, healthcare and manufacturing, which we actually have quite a bit of in Monroe. And so that brings me to the draft document. And again, it's a very data-driven document. And I really wanted just to get it into your hands so you could take a look at it if you had questions. This data is very current. It's from 2021 and 2022. Again, it's talking about all of the things that go into economic development. What are income levels? What are rents? Where can we see growth in, or where can we see job growth? It compares the city of Monroe with other jurisdictions, Puget Sound region. And so I don't think there were any highlights in here that I really wanted to look at. So wait a minute. Oh. And if you go back in the document, it starts talking about some of the specific areas that we asked them to evaluate, North Kelsey, First Airfield. There was a property on the southeast side of the fairgrounds, which is actually owned by the county. But the county is also looking at doing a strategic plan for future growth of the fairgrounds. I don't know if the contract has been let yet, but they were up for an RFP. And then getting into some of the, tying back to the land use scenarios on page 44, it's got a map of those specific areas that we were looking for. Where do we have that growth, job potential growth? And then again, it ties back to the land use scenarios on pages 45, kind of going through the rest of the document on the amount of land that's available, the type of zoning that's already there, and the potential of future job creation. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Or if you're, especially Jay, if you're seeing something that isn't really consistent with what you're hearing, I mean, your background is pretty good for economic development and for Liz as well, being a business owner, you know, as you've looked through these documents, if there's anything that doesn't seem right, please let me know and I'll get it back to the consultants.
Kelsey, did you have a comment, question?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so I was wondering, I did notice that we were using the inmate population in the document. And are we just consistently using that? And is that going to skew our numbers on like renters, income, or like accurate representation of what's going on in the city?
So can you, can you start that? I didn't hear your, you're concerned about the data source?
Oh, no. Am I breaking up or?
No, no, I just need volume.
Okay, so we are using, in the document, they are using the inmates population as like going up and going down. And are, are we consistently going to use the inmates population on every document? And is that going to skew our numbers on like renters' levels? And that kind of thing? I think we had that concern last time when they presented some information. So I was just wondering if that was going to be, how we're going to, yeah, handle that.
So I think I got it. You're asking about the Department of Corrections numbers in with the total population, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So any of the household figures, income size, education does not include the Department of Corrections. They are included in our total population and our demographics. But once we start asking the household numbers, that is actually group quarter population. So it's excluded. So when, if we focus on the household numbers, that is not part of the data set. So you're going to see that in both of them. And Alex and Lance and I have all talked about that. How do we create a short narrative on how the Department of Correction populate, or where is the Department of Correction information included and excluded?
Cool. And then my other question, or can I? I have another question, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Um, someone, I was talking to someone about the airport a while back when we were discussing that. And I thought it was really cool that we might have a different zone in town. But they raised a concern that having a bunch of different zones of where there's like a lot of, a lot of businesses takes away from each other. So are we, I just wanted to bring that to our attention that, because they can't connect really. I don't, I don't know the airport area versus like downtown. So how do we combat like direct competition with those zones? That was just something that I thought was interesting that someone brought up.
Sure. So First Airfield is designated as commercial, but the specific zoning is tourist commercial. The designation was changed in 2015 and the zoning was done in 2019. And that zone was created very specifically to support and build upon the fairgrounds. And the, the concept in the long range plan is that could we envision that area? What, what could we envision in that area if the airport goes away? Because that's privately owned, the city does not own that. So if the airport goes away, how can we reimagine it? And so the uses in that very specific zone are a little bit different than what's allowed in North Kelsey, downtown commercial, and the Prilands. In 2013 and 2015, a full-blown environmental impact statement was done and included a fair amount of economic analysis. So your question is a really good one. It is something that we do think about. Back when I was here in the early 2000s, that was one really big conversation about North Kelsey developing and what kind of impacts would it have for the downtown commercial? And so when you get down to the zoning of what's permitted and not permitted, the city is trying to keep that a little bit in the forefront of our thinking of the differences.
Cool. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Jay. It was crazy. You were like looking at me and saying, I swear you were starting to say my name before it had my hand up. You're a mind reader, Jay. When you said the economic element is required, but it's optional.
Yeah.
So when we talk about like the industrial employment targets that we have, like we want to accommodate 2,000 industrial job opportunities, in a way, are we kind of handcuffing ourselves with those figures? I understand that all cities kind of do the economic element, it seems like. And so when it comes to compliance or getting our kind of comp plan stamped, when it comes to we need to meet those numbers, are we kind of just saying we want to meet them just for ourselves because that's our target? Or is there any real like repercussions if we were to say, maybe we don't want to grow our industrial area? Maybe we want to, I hope that makes sense.
So clarify where that number came from, from the industrial, 2,000?
I, I made it up.
Yeah.
It's something like, there's some number like that around 2,000 for industrial.
You're probably referring to is the total jobs that we have to accommodate.
Yeah.
It doesn't, they, the state, the county, PSRC does not tell us how to get there. They just say, we, the city of Monroe should be accommodating.
It's 2,700, right?
Yeah, was the total number for the city and the county.
Jobs, jobs, jobs.
Yeah, it just says jobs. It doesn't say what kind of job. So it's up to us. And if we want to have a policy on what kind of mix we think is appropriate. But we do not break it down by industry. It's just, this is the number that we are working towards based on our population allocation. So there's, they're, they're kind of remit.
But you had said that it's optional for us.
So there's a couple of things. It's the economic development element is a mandatory element under the Growth Management Act. But the state came out many years ago saying that if we do not fund it, it is an optional element. It's up for your, you can do it, but we're not, until it is paid for, we don't have to do it. So we are doing it on our own. That is totally separate from Puget Sound Regional Council, the state, Puget Sound Regional Council, Snohomish County say, city of Monroe, you need to work towards this allocation of jobs. So they're two different things.
So to simplify my question, the growth targets are outside of the economic element?
Absolutely.
Okay, got it. That, that was my question. Thank you.
Yeah.
So number of housing is different than number of jobs created, but we still have targets we have to meet by 2040?
Yes.
So of that, on that same page, on page here, it's like exhibit 21, page on page 35. So there's already a forecasted employment growth of almost like 2,200. And that appears to be forecasted with what we already have for zoning and like just growth if it continues on the way that it had. I understand that at some point, we would run out of some of the retail spaces or, and that's what we're trying to make sure that we are looking at. But that's pretty close to the forecasted number that they're asking us to get to. So I know right now we're saying, oh, we need to come up with 2,700 jobs. But I mean, naturally, we're already going to come up with quite a few. Just historically, that's how it's been happening as well. And so that pressure of 2,700, I don't feel like it's that big of a pressure because the gap that what we need and what we're probably already going to get is only like 500 or 600, what we're really trying to get.
But I think the story that the numbers are telling us is we have way too many people commuting in and out of the city.
That's a different issue though than I wanted to talk about with this real quick. So really, that's true, right? What I'm saying, that the forecasted numbers are already getting us pretty close to our required numbers without us making major changes to zoning.
Some of that's probably happening though, not like regular growth, right?
Same again, Kelsey?
Some of that's from annexing, not just regular growth. I guess that wouldn't make sense with like jobs, but a lot of our numbers are from like annexed areas coming into town. So, or coming into Monroe. So they haven't been like natural growth, I would think.
So I don't mean to answer to the question. I just want to point out that there is already going to be some growth for the jobs. It's already going to happen. That's historically happened, naturally runs off. That was one point I wanted to make. The other thing is the, what Jay just mentioned, it sounds like where we really should be focusing is on the affordable housing that, and I don't, you know, I mean, when I say affordable housing, I mean, different types of housing on different sized lots and different sized homes that can accommodate the people who commute in here to work or that possibly used to live here and had to move outside of town in order to find an affordable place to live. So that is really interesting, like you pointed out, that so many people leave the city. And then maybe the ones who are coming here to commuting in, if, I'm sorry, the ones that are leaving every day, what if we try to attract one of those type of employers here? So that people aren't having to drive so far. um people aren't having to drive so far? That's it. Thank you.
What exhibit were you referring to before? Was it 21?
21, it's on like page 35, we got it in the packet.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone know what the big annexation was in 97? Like the farming area? I guess that sounds like the Prailands, but that doesn't sound like it would be outside of city limits.
Actually, DOC was, or the same one. I'll have to look it up. I can find that out for you. Ninety-seven annexation.
I think it was ninety-seven, there was
Yeah, DOC.
I think the DOC has been in Monroe's population forever. Because I think the Monroe's population was like 2,000 back in the 30s.
Oh, I'm gonna trust her, but we'll get back to you. Um, oh, Hannah was just saying she had a, a public records request she just did on annexations, so I'm gonna trust her on, we'll do something, yeah, definitely.
But, but we should all have in our mind what the Department of Corrections facility, the inmate population and the employment population is. So the numbers that I looked at were 2,500 inmates and 1,200 correction employees. Does that sound right?
Right now, I just looked uh last week because I was um wanted to have it for this. The staff is still around. It's, it's around between 1,000 and 1,100 right now, and the inmate population is down to between 1,200 and like 1,400.
Oh, really?
Yeah, because they just closed one of the major prisons up there for now.
And those are living wage jobs? That's why our numbers are skewed for professional administration or whatever, but I looked at the Department of Corrections 21, and they're making a living wage, you know? Made thirty, you know, whatever, whatever.
Is there state or federal jobs?
It's just state.
Wow, so government might be, is that our biggest employer?
No. Oh, well, yeah, sorry. DOC is the largest employer in the city. And then the school district, and then is it still Canyon, Creek, Campness, yeah.
That term that was used earlier uh with respect to that area was group?
Group quarters.
Is that new or I've, I've never heard that one?
Yeah, no, it's um a census, it's part of the census data. And um I wish I could remember the gentleman's name that's working with Mig, and he would, he did a really good job, I thought, of explaining as soon as you get into the household data, it takes out anything that is not a household. So they're looking at the different um data sheets from the census. And then we are, we also use the community. Gosh, I just based on the name. It's the, it's census data, but they do it every three to five years and it's a limited sample. I'm saying community.
BS, I, I, I can't remember either.
Yeah, anyway, so it's, it's census data that we're using.
Got you.
It's always it's more interesting than the regular census data because it has it, it has categories that I think refer to more things that we talk about, sort of community development.
I think I played with it before and I started to hurt my own head with some of the filters I was adding.
I was just recently on a webinar where somebody was going through the whole process of like how how to use it and how to navigate through it, and it's it's its own, it's sort of its own little preacher.
Community survey, that's what it is. Census Bureau's American Community Survey. ACS is the acronym, that's it.
So our highest employee, employee, your employer category is public administration. And this is from 2021, which is 21% of employment within, so.
Right.
And this is, I think, classified to directions officer. That falls into that of public administration?
I was gonna say, some of the school district probably does too, if you have anything principal above.
Question?
I have a question. On the um commuter information, on the in and out, it almost seems like we were kind of focused on where people are going. Um, but not where people are coming from, per, just because um that's the majority is like Outflow to Seattle, Kirkland, Bothell, Delvin, Redmond. This is exhibit 25 on page 79. Um, I, I'm just curious on, and not a lot of people are coming in from any of those places, and so
They told you where they're coming. Everett, Marysville, Stevens, the people that are coming from.
That's still only 15%. And our, our inflows, 59% is in an all other category. Um, so even if we add up all the ones of where people are coming from, um, we don't get much. And so I was just wondering if who chose to, if there's, yeah, like maybe who was it who chose these cities or if there was an accidental emphasis on trying to find out where people are going? Um, or if I'm just interpreting it that way, because I feel like not knowing where 60% of the people are coming from. Um, I think that's important because I have a feeling they're coming from other areas that are uh more affordable, which would not be Redmond, Delvin, Bothell, Kirkland, Seattle, Lake Stevens, uh so the majority of the places on there.
So this is actually um not much different than um the twenty, um, 2015 documents. And it's kind of the same thing, so I think we could definitely dig into those other locations uh that, because um for the 2013 data, it was 57% of in commuters are from other locations. And then the speci, specific breakouts again were 14% from Monroe, 5% from Everett, um, 4% from Marysville, so I'm, I'm more than happy to take a look at that.
Well, if they're keeping it consistent that they're choosing the same cities every time, I mean, and then that same all other category is staying around the same, I imagine we can guess where people are coming in from, it's places that are more affordable than here and there.
Here, here.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe not, I mean.
No, they're coming from east too.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it doesn't look like anything on there is from east of Monroe.
But that is your point. Your point is right, that we don't have enough affordable places here. I can find a apartment in Everett cheaper than I can here. Right? And so I'm on the board of a, a nonprofit that's based in Everett. They focus on youth uh unhoused youth. And so they have a facility in Monroe. And they can't hire people locally because they can't afford to live in Monroe. So they have to hire and pay them a subsidy to commute to it. And, and their 24-hour staff, so they need, you know, a constant supply of qualified staff, but they have to give them a subsidy to work in Monroe because they can't afford it.
Interesting. Well, that's a good segue for this whole economic portion. If, if that business is having that issue, other businesses are having that issue of not being able to find employees that want to work here because they can't afford to live here.
I feel like in one of the presentations that Nita had given on the middle housing and the affordable housing, she had some more of that data um about who could afford to live in uh this community and the affordable housing, or it was, it was, I know it was part of the affordable housing. The information came from AHA. And so I'm more than happy to bring that back. Housing, housing is our biggest challenge, I believe, in my opinion, for this comp plan update on how are we gonna make it work?
But I think your information here, this summary, the past, the last couple pages, very helpful. Because what it makes us understand is, you know, like everybody's saying, we're gonna meet our housing goal um just naturally. Our focus should be on how are we gonna meet it with the right goal, with the right housing affordability.
By this income level?
Yeah, because we can build a chain link or units to the acre all day, every day, but those are million old houses up there now, so.
Right.
And those folks are commuting down 203 to Microsoft and they can afford the, the house. We're trying to limit commuting and have people work in town and work in
I think the data that Kate was referring to showed uh from AHA, they had a breakout. They looked at an analysis of how much it would, how much you would need to make in order to live in um communities. And they, and they have that for uh Monroe and other communities in the, in the county.
Yeah, it was, it was 170,000, I think, it was like, like Monroe.
Yeah, it was, it was kind of shockingly high, honestly, but.
Well, even the rental numbers, in order to rent in Monroe, you have to still have a, a fairly significant income.
It's one of those things. When I, we bought our house, we're homeowners, when we bought our house in 2017 and at the peak of the pandemic, which is like, what, 2021, maybe early 2022, when we were getting flooded with people like, hey, we'll buy your house, I mean, our house value at its peak had more than doubled in less than four years. And so it's one of those things, my family couldn't move to Monroe right now. Like we did, right, we, I think we, when we bought our house in 2017, I think we, we finalized the sale and then it was like a week later, there was an article in the Seattle Times that talked about Monroe specifically being one of the biggest places that was gonna have a housing boom because of like voting in Microsoft, like it was the next that bubble keeps getting bigger and bigger, and now with the work from home, it's, it's it continues to grow because they only have to go to work like one day a week now. And so it's just, it's a cha, it is gonna be a challenge because there's so many pieces of that that no, no public official in locally is going to control that at all. And so how do you, how do you balance what's out of control and, and balance that with what you can control to, to just try to mitigate some of that? Because there's some pieces of it now that have gone to a level where you can't, you can't backtrack that really, at least from, from a governing standpoint. You can't backtrack all of that. And so it's, it's gonna be a big a big project for sure to look at. It's a big conversation here. It's a big conversation anywhere now.
There's a, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say on page 15, there's a interesting um kind of trend right at 2020. And this is, I, I would assume that this coincides, obviously it's COVID era, but also I assume it's probably dilution from new housing development, single-family housing development. Um, but you'll see that our renter occupied percentage of housing in Monroe was rising throughout the 2010s and then kind of leveled off at 37%, and then 2020 went down to 32% and then 31%. Um, do we have the numbers of like actually, I, I know we have the numbers of um residents that are home or owners versus renters. Um, are they on this packet by chance? I didn't read past like page 30, but.
I don't think they're in this packet. I mean, we had that data with the housing materials.
Because my curiosity is that I wonder if rental units have decreased. Um, and if so, because just as much as middle housing and housing affordability is a big point for us, uh the ability to rent and, and have places where people um can rent to live is, is equally as important because not everyone has the credit to purchase a house or is in that situation. So definitely just something to continue to, to think about renters are just as important.
So Jay, your question is specifically related to single-family houses, rent versus owner?
Uh, occupancy, renter occupancy in Monroe. I guess the raw numbers uh versus owners. I just want to see if it went down which would imply maybe that more rental units went off the market, turned into owned houses or, or something.
Like conversions.
Yeah, conversions.
Divident condominiumized.
Right.
Yeah.
I think if you're talking single-family residences, I think what Melanie's talking about in May of 2022 was the highest point for house prices here in the Seattle area. Um, a lot of people that own single-family, like they bought them in the Prailands in the 90s and they moved and they rented their house. But once it got to a certain price, like in May 2022, they sold that house, stayed up, continued to rent it. So I think we lost it in 2020.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering about the numbers, yeah.
And this only goes to 2021, so it could be less than 31%.
Yeah. And we're talking, is the percentage you're saying is like 31% renters versus another percentage? Some of that may just be that the amount of rental units that are being built is not on pace with the number of homes?
Right.
Because we have, obviously, we've had massive housing developments in the last several years too that have gone in, so in terms of, because we've had, I mean, there's been the, there's been the buildings that are apartment buildings and stuff that have gone up too, but it, it sounds like maybe um how just like, yeah, the single-family homes and stuff have outpaced new rentals as well.
Absolutely. I mean, there are basically three years where a substantial number of going back to 2000. Yeah, 2000, there's only, there's like three blips where you can see the apartment or attached housing uh construction. Most of the city of Monroe is detached.
But on exhibit eight, right above that, numbers for, so page 23, it, it appears that the housing by types, they keep, continue to grow in the same percentages, like it's 70% one units and then about 30% two or more units, like so as that number has risen by 1,000 in the last 10 years, that percentage every year has still been 70%. So I, I think more of what um more of what we're suspecting of, I mean, it looks like it's been 30% renter occupied also over the last 10 years is pretty average. It did go up to 40%, but um, I have another question about, we talked about this before, for economic development. We just said that so many people now can work from home. And you had said that the state is talking that they understand that that is uh something newer that they hadn't even thought about when they came up with their last set of um rules on employment and what we can count for employment. And you had said that at this time, we're not able to count people who work from home as, as being employed through a job.
Yeah, and so just um to go back to that conversation. So that was actually a Snohomish County tomorrow conversation with the county and all the city um planning directors. And when I was asking for clarification, there are so many more um uh home occupations. And I noticed this even more in Marysville than when I come back here. Um, it exploded, but you cannot forecast home occupations. You can on brick and mortar or um, yeah, brick and mortar type businesses. So we, you, you cannot project how many you're gonna have out there, but once they're in the community, you get credit for them. It's this really weird dynamic because the data comes out from, uh, what is it? Um Washington State, or we get all the licensing. Or is it revenue? Thank you, Department of Revenue. Oh my gosh, it's been a really long day. So the Department of Revenue comes out and they tell us um, we get the list right on the business licenses, or on the business, yeah. So it's like an after the fact, oh, you have all these additional businesses that you had no idea. And what the um, the county staff were telling me is that we in the projecting, we are not allowed to use those numbers, but it's an, it's a look back where you're like, oh, well, look, we, we met our job target because we have all of these in-home businesses. It's a really weird dynamic.
But why wouldn't they let you project for that? I mean, saying that you can project for brick and mortar is no, is no more scientific or accurate than home businesses. Businesses go out of business whether they're located on the internet or located in a, in a brick and mortar.
So the difference is uh billable lands. So when the county says you have X amount of land that is zoned, so they'll, they'll use actual numbers for existing businesses that go up and down. So they fluctuate when the business comes in, a business goes out. But if you have vacant land, partially used or redevelopable, and it's designated commercial, they have a formula that they can use that gets us to X number of employees. And that's why they're like, you can use brick and mortar because we have this formula and we can estimate how many jobs you'll have. There is no metric for um home occupations. They could be in any They could be in any residential zone if they need it, but there's no way of saying, oh, well, this looks like a great neighborhood, I'm gonna locate X number of home businesses.
Isn't this a bit of a paradigm shift that may need to occur though? I mean, is that, because people working from home wasn't even a thing five years ago as much as it is now. So only creating jobs by building buildings isn't probably gonna be a thing in ten more years, like, yeah.
I would suspect, just because it is so popular to work at home, that you're gonna see changes. From my perspective, for what we need, the realm that we work in, really look at what's happening at Puget Sound Regional Council. Because that's, that for our, for the Puget Sound region, that's really where they have these conversations of allocating different types of jobs. And maybe that's where the work needs to start.
Well, I mean, it's, it's, there's, there's, there's exhibits later on in here, I can't remember what number it was. Like, for example, you can measure the vacancy rate of office space, but you can't really measure the vacancy rate for home occupations. Because theoretically, any residential unit could be a home occupation. But having said that, I, I'd worked in two communities that had a real strong home occupation part of the economy, and there are things that you can do in your policies to encourage those things. And it, it, it goes from the gamut of what, what you allow as a home occupation within your land use table and promoting high-speed internet, you know, throughout. I mean, so there, there, there are, there are things that communities have done that specifically promote home occupations. They're, they're tricky because they're, you know, they're not, within a neighborhood, they can become to a scale that is not, that can some people find to be a little bit of a nuisance. And I, and to give you an example, in one community I worked in, we allow a lot of personal services, like hair, hair salons and things of that nature, massage therapy. And the ones that were really successful, you know, you had neighbors where it's like, there's cars coming and going all the time. And, you know, so it's like, you, you have to, to balance that. But it was, it was a way for people that, that, and I believe you'd see it, where somebody opens a hair salon, they're just a one-person operation, and a certain percentage of them, well, they wanna grow and then they take everything, you know. So, you know, that, it's, it is a, it's kind of a long-term strategy that has a lot of, that's, that's a lot of benefits to it.
The other thing, yeah, the other thing I was thinking is because it's so, the, the popularity is still so new, data is needed to show if this is a continuous trend. And if you're able to see some kind of trend in your community, I think you could make an argument that Monroe has since twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, Monroe has seen this constant trend of X number of new home occupations in comparison to new brick and mortar. And if you have something like that, you have to, where we go to get our comp plan certified with Puget Sound Regional Council, we have to show we've done our work. So I think we might not be able to make that argument today, but the next time we do this in ten years, there probably is gonna be enough data where you could say, hey, these home occupations really ought to be counted for on the front end, not just the look back. So it's an emerging trend, I would totally agree with that.
Can we get to Kelsey? Who's still on topic, Kelsey?
Yeah, well, I guess, kind of. I was wondering if we have more plans to annex areas? Because on page twelve, we annexed the Woodlands and six hundred and sixty residences were added. So if we are, it sounds like we are doing more, so how many households will be added to that? And do we get to our number that way? That's quite a.
So the, yeah, so the Woodlands was annexed in twenty twenty-two. The city is looking at another annexation area on the, where's that? Woods Creek Vista, where the subdivision behind the farm was just completed. That area is of interest, it is in our urban growth area. And when that subdivision went in, they had to sign a no protest agreement, which helps us actually implement an annexation. There are two additional ones, I think I have mentioned before this commission before. There's a single parcel that is adjacent to the high school. The property owner, there, it's a petition method, the property owner is doing it himself. It's, it got held up in the legal description. So the city and the county have been going back and forth with the property proponent. He does have approval to move through the process. We just need to get that legal description finalized. And then there's a secondary application that is from the, the private property owners are interested, still somewhat in the Monroe Woodlands area. So it's a little bit further north and east, forty-one acres. And that one, they are at the sixty percent petition method. However, the applicant has been meeting with city staff that they're having a hard time getting the necessary signatures to move forward. So there are additional annexations. And I actually have our consultant right now working on a map for me. It's just a very simple one that shows the city limits and the unincorporated areas. You all can see those areas that the city could annex today if there was the will and interest of other, our city leadership or private property owners.
How many units would that be?
I will have to get back to you on that, I don't have that on top of my head.
But most likely right now, it's not very many residents because those are zoned as like, there's not very many people living out there. But the idea is that they annex it in so then they can build more houses on there. So then that's where we get our growth.
That is the piece of it. And so in the land use scenarios that you all saw a couple of weeks ago, what, one of the strategies the city is looking at from the residential side, not the, well, actually, there's a commercial side too, is looking at all of the area that is within the city and the future, or in the unincorporated areas, assuming they get annexed into the city someday. We want to change or increase the density from four dwelling units per acre to seven, because that helps us. And then the other thing that Anita will be bringing back is we're looking at, how do we get this, how do we actually get a middle housing, the duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, cottage, cottage housing? So we're looking at what is our regulatory tool, so we're looking at an overlay. But the city cannot make any decisions on any of that land that's in the unincorporated area until it gets annexed. And so, but we are planning that as part of this comp plan process to say, this is where we wanna go. This is how we're trying to achieve these numbers.
Thinking that, like, that probably gets us really close to our growth of units.
Yeah, absolutely.
Jake?
Sorry, I had one question for Lance, but I have a quick one for you. The Woods Creek Vista one that you're talking about, do you have any idea how many units that might be?
It's the, it's, well, it's, I, I will have to get back to you because it's the entire subdivision that has, that is under construction now. And then there are, oh, gosh.
I guess it'd be a million plats at this moment.
Well, there's only one plat, but there's a lot more parcels.
Parcel, sorry.
That the city could, could annex with that subdivision. And I, I'm gonna have to go back because in two thousand twenty-one, the city was looking at what we're trying to do again. And I think in there, there are some numbers, so I can bring that as a future meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the, the subdivision that's happening out there right now is, is going, it's, you know, it's approved and submitted.
Got it. When you were talking about the cities that you were with in the past that in some ways kind of encouraged that at-home businesses, I know with online, uh, online shopping, the city is able to collect the tax or, or some tax revenue on it. When it comes to at-home businesses, let's say LLC, my fencing company at my house, that's my address for it, build a house in Woodinville, I assume the city, do they get tax revenue for that? Monroe, since the LLC is in Monroe?
In that, in the case, because, because a lot of, a lot of contractors have squares, they have like, you know, their office at home. It's not, it's not a lot because the proportion of their business is not really, you know, they're really doing estimation and accounting work at home. So there is, there is, there is a tax that they, that they pay operating that business. It's not, it's not that huge.
Sorry, I mean, like, the revenue.
The revenue that they're making for their construction is not paid through that, through that location.
Okay, got it, thank you, yeah. So I was gonna say, I, I could see in that case how you would kind of encourage that, okay.
Oh, we, let's.
Yeah.
And also businesses that are operating outside of their, like, place where they have their office. In that city, they have to get a business license usually for that city, it's called a non-resident business license. We also require that for contractors that do business in our city, so that way we can blood tax forms.
Do you guys know for schools, at-home schooling, when I was out and about a few months ago, a lot of people, it was, there was probably three different neighborhoods in town where people said, yeah, this person started a school out of their house. And like you were saying about cars coming and going, you know, like, no, my cul-de-sac has a line of parents picking up their kids after. What is the city's kind of code around that?
Oh, gosh. I should say, you probably just gave us a bunch of good violations.
Okay, I ain't gonna tell you where they are.
It's, you're not allowed to do that as a school. Like, you can't, you, if you're homeschooling, you have to homeschool your own kids, you can't homeschool other kids.
They were all unincorporated Snohomish County, I was in the wrong area.
There you go.
Otherwise, you have to get a business, you have to get a business license. If you're not, yeah. And then you have to follow our, our rules for the business license. We do have in our, in Title twenty-two, can't remember which chapter, but it talks about what, what you can and cannot do as a home occupation.
Single-family resident section.
For Hannah's walking up with the baton.
Any more questions? So just to let you know, Lance and/or I will be taking this to the Economic Advisory, Development Advisory Board.
EDA.
EDA, there we go. It's getting socialized, you were the first.
My honor. I'll email a couple of edits I have.
Absolutely, yeah, if you see edits, you have questions, you're like, I just don't think that looks right. Please send me an email and I'll get back with our consultants.
Like edits on the report?
I can, I feel bad, I didn't know we were scrutinizing, I didn't know that that was like the purpose of it.
Oh, no, they're not asking for edits, like.
Yeah, if you, but if you see something and you're like, wow, that's.
My services are one hundred percent.
Got Jay on retainer.
You can run it through AI or you can prove it.
Jay, GPT.
So at the bottom of the page, it's page sixty of sixty-nine. I'm looking at the, technically the fourth bullet, where it says industrial lease, lease rates have steadily declined since twenty thirteen, but the graph shows steadily increased. And I reference page thirty-six, if you wanna look at that. Where, oh, going back, and this is the PDF, it's page thirty-six of the report, but forty-five of sixty-nine in our PDF. It's that first paragraph where it says exhibit thirty-one. And the sentence starts, vacancy rates have risen relatively steadily since two thousand and six, but I think it's these days.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind emailing me, I would appreciate it, thank you.
That would be way easier than.
Yeah. I'm like, what page are you on, what is the number? So that, and that goes for everyone online too. If you see something that seems weird or there's a disconnect between the graphic, just let me know, send me an email. Thank you. Awesome, thank you for the conversation.
Thank you. All right. And then item seven point three, we have the Community Development Report for October. Hannah?
Actually, sent it to you guys this time.
It's all kind of good stuff.
Okay, so in October, we had lots of pre-application meetings. We had eight pre-apps in the month of October. One was for an ice cream truck cover at the seventy-six station. One was for another pre-application meeting for the Miracles and Memories Academy, opening a resource center for families with this, families with disabled individuals. Another pre-application for the church at three three one South Lewis. They were interested in a boundary line adjustment and a home conversion. An accessory dwelling unit at one three six North Lakeview. An interior TI for a meat smoking facility for Village Protein. They wanna do commercial fancy bolognese, something interesting. And we had two pre-application meetings with Mr. Coleman for his Pray Lane and Benet's shop. He was just trying to find a good location for it and wanted to work with city staff to see if they would be viable. And at one eighteen North Lewis Street, a childcare facility, that is the Thrive Fitness. Yeah.
Okay, Hannah, can we go back to number two?
Yeah.
So that house sold in November, it looks like, October, November.
It did.
So this is a new owner of that house, not far from Frank Wexner Elementary, too?
I'm not sure if they were the ones that ended up closing on it, I'll have to check with staff tomorrow.
So my question isn't that, it's more, if it's a nonprofit, does, does the city somehow lose tax revenue on a nonprofit? If they're registered as a nonprofit, there's a, there's a tax pay. This is what a mixed use.
But I'm wondering, so I don't think that they went, I, I don't think they moved forward with this property. I believe they came in for another pre-app at another property as well.
And they've, they've been in for, they've been in for at least two.
Yeah. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hannah, what's the T in interior TI, missing the highest inspection?
Uh, tenant improvement.
Oh.
Yeah, so it's fancy word for remodel.
So is the industrial gonna smell like jerky?
They have to have a lot of ventilation, so probably not.
There's a vitamin manufacturer by Lake Thai.
Yeah.
That just makes the lake smell in different scents, in different.
Our project highlight for the month was the commercial tenant improvement for Planet Fitness. This was a pretty big commercial TI. They applied in April of twenty twenty-three, and after four review cycles, they received final approval in late September. They received commercial mechanical plumbing, fire alarm, fire sprinkler, and sign permits. They've been granted their certificate of occupancy and they're open for business. We had nine single families and nine commercial TI building permits issued in October. Our code enforcement cases were up by ten cases, ten more cases were closed in October than in September. Some updates to the projects listed on this page, some were taken off, I believe in, I can't remember which ones were taken off because they have been approved. I think it was the conditional use permit for the pickleball courts was taken off this page. But otherwise, there's not been anything new added.
So Hannah, under civil construction, that property that is west of the new IHOP, that's been on there for a while?
Yes, that's the eighteen six hundred State Route Two.
Sorry, probably not one more, but Community Development Department. Community Development Department, Riverside Station or the Kong, no, what was it called?
Oh, the twin houses.
Yeah.
The block houses.
So as soon as they're out of there. The thing that's in civil designer view is a three-story mixed retail building, mixed use. Wow.
Yep.
And do you guys, I heard recently there was a development on those getting saved or held out of there?
I haven't heard of it.
It's kind of a moving target. Yes, and then it was, the last I heard, they had. There's the distance that they were gonna have to move it. They got, they got, they got the price for what it was gonna cost to move it. It's, it's, it's not, it's always a little more than you think it's gonna be. It's pretty involved, but the movement itself, like if you're having to go through areas. Where you have to raise, you have to go underneath electrical lines. There's a, there's a procedure that they use. So they have to go through the PV. I mean, it's, I mean, they, they literally lift them up, but you know, you can't just. Take, oh, well, you hand me a stick and, you know, so it, it's, it can get, the, the further you have to go, the more of those things you have to deal with, the more expensive it becomes. So I don't know whether they're gonna go along with that.
Right, across the country, yeah. Need to be.
I have something. I always like looking over these and then like seeing what's coming in under the current zoning. Sometimes it does make me a little bit stressed because it feels like. These are some areas that we would wish we could get more denser housing or more. More different types of housing. And then we're getting, you know, a thirty-three lot subdivision with R four again, and a ninety law, a ninety. Subdivision with on R four again. And it's like, if you add all these up. And the opportunity to make any changes just feels like sometimes it's escaping us. So. That part's a little bit disappointing sometimes. And then there's a good, you know, there's something like the one you just mentioned with the retail on bottom and the sixteen units on top. In that area, that's what they targeted is what they want down there. And then that's coming to fruition. So. That's showing that when they target zone area for improvement, like the retail and residential mix, right in the walkable downtown, it's working. So. Just wanted to find that out.
Yeah, just, I'm just out on that. It, it is really a challenge when you're. When you're working on a comprehensive plan and you're coming up with this vision of what you want to see change, because the only way. That you prevent things from happening in the moment is you do a moratorium, but there has to be a justification for that. Otherwise, these, like you're saying, these are permitted uses. That Garrett Baldi one, it's actually been in for quite a while. It's still under the PRD code. And that code was eliminated in twenty nineteen. Yeah, so that, that project has been really. Kind of slow-moving and it's been sold to a new, new developer. The Coopers Ridge, that's a straight plat. And I, I feel like that got, and that was the one that the gentleman was asking about. Noticing it is a plat, so it would have gotten notified and I believe.
Is ours three hundred or five hundred?
Five hundred.
Yeah, we have a five hundred foot radius that all property owners get a postcard in the mail.
There's a giant.
Signs, yeah, yeah, yeah. But it, it is a challenge because when you're trying to change, you know, you can't stop things that are permitted. So get it done.
You could technically unplug the server that they applied for the permit on. It's all the cloud.
But I guess in reality, when would, I mean. When our plans adopted at the, it would be the end of December two thousand and twenty-four, that council would make a final decision on something. So we're, we're talking about. Like one more year of building under current zoning until there could maybe be a change.
But the movie projects, like Kate said, that are already grandfathered, so already in the process, early stages.
But in the case of the PRD, since it's on the PRD anymore, did they have to stick with that or could they choose to keep that if they wanted, or they could go with whatever they want?
So Garrett Baldi, it would not be in their best interest not to stick with that PRD because they were able to achieve a higher density than allowed by that zoning code. I will tell you, I have been getting a couple of phone calls recently for other properties up on the hill. And the big question is, are you gonna change the zoning? Are you, are you working on your middle housing? So there are some property owners out there. That are aware that if they can wait, there might be a benefit for them. So I got a couple of those calls last week. So, you know, we'll see.
So they could build more inexpensive product or stuff?
I don't know if it's more inexpensive, but they could build more.
More of them.
More units. And I did tell them that the city of Monroe is looking at a middle housing overlay. Or some type of technique that would allow even greater than seven units per acre. And they were. They were very happy to hear that and it sounds like they'll be waiting on their, their land.
So there, there's two ways to increase affordability. You know, in the market without subsidies and grants and that. So increase density and decrease size. So could the overlay save maximum in size?
That, that's something that we could consider. I can't remember what was in the draft. Regulations that Anita is putting together, but that's something that we will be bringing to the planning commission and to the council to say, to achieve middle housing. This is the concepts we've come up with. You know, let's have a conversation. Or i- is this gonna help us get there or not?
Good.
And then it will be coming to the council, so you'll be good.
I saw from an incredible source about the idea of the Starbucks next to the IHOP drive-thru. How do things make it on this page and not, or like, what's that stage where it's like? If they had just applied, which I think the person said that they did, where is that in the process?
So he.
That was like the messiest question ever, but basically where, where is that?
I can get what you're putting down. So the property owner is currently in for his civil permits. They've been approved. We're just waiting. For contractor info to issue them. So that's taken care of. He's applied for the building permits as well. I believe they're close to being approved. So they're in the works. We don't put building permits and things like that on this page, but we do put things like the civil construction and, and that on here. Just gonna say, a lot of times, I think your other, the other part of your question though is a lot of times. We, they will come in with a different name. It is not actually the corporate name. And so you may not know that, we may not know that. Or we may know that, but are not allowed to share that, which is typically what happens until it actually opens. So you'll see it under the eighteen-six-hundred US two address.
Right.
Yeah.
Remember you held out on Wendy's for a while, Hannah?
Yeah. Anita was so excited to share that with you guys.
The Wendy's?
Yeah. That they're still.
Oh, yeah.
Remember there was some like anticipation around what Anita was gonna share? I was thinking like Texas Roadhouse or Chancalay or something.
But we are, we are expected to get, like in this list with the civil construction. There's, the, the building code is changing in March fifteenth, in March fifteenth of next year. And there are a number of projects on here that are wanting to get everything submitted. Prior to Mars, like the Stanton Station project, which is. We're not in, we're not in Evergreen. I was getting ready to point. It's over across the street from, from our temporary office. It's, it's, it's been in process for a long time. But they want to do that. That's a, that's twenty-two unit townhouses. And I know that Garrett Baldi and Cooper's Ridge got recently. That couple got sold.
Oh, yeah.
To guess who?
Their landlord?
To somebody. Cause they're right, they're finishing up a bunch of work right next to it. So they might want to get, you know, so we, we could potentially be looking at. A hundred building permits before, before March fifteenth. Will, will they all make that? I, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's. A lot, a lot has to be, a lot has to be done before then, but there's a big push. So it's, it's, we've well exceeded what we predicted. Cause we, we did a two-year budget, so we predicted revenues based on, we were trying to be conservative. We, we've done well above what we were predicting. Probably by half. We were looking at four years to get that kind of numbers. So things are moving. It's slowing down.
Just so you understand the process to civils and all of that. When there's new construction, they have to get their civil improvements, their, all of that approved and. Done before they can apply for their building permits. So that's the process when that Lance is talking about, they're gonna be pushing to get the civils done.
Right.
To get the building permits.
That's this March?
Yes.
Wow.
Yeah.
Good luck, you got.
Yeah.
No, no, sorry, because it's not on here. There's two names now on the Lakeview building sign out front. Have you guys heard about that?
I know that the sign just went up. I didn't know that they got names on there.
One of them's pet related, but it's not wet noses. Yeah, that was exciting.
Look, look, and I haven't seen that. I drive by there fairly regularly, so it's just within the last couple of days or so?
Unless I was hallucinating, I swear, it's like. Four or five days ago, I drove by, it's sign went up and it's pretty and it has two, two names on it now. It's got more spaces, but I thought that was meant to hold two tenants, so.
Initially, it was one.
It could just.
Keeps changing.
Initially, it was one and then they looked at revising some of the interior to do, to do for, which I think that's what they were, that they were leaving a little bit of that open, so. Depending on clients.
They did a great job with lighting too on the backside of the way print there. We should have though.
Waiting for the big mural on the back way to.
So moving on down. The updates from the building department. Several members of the building team went to the WABO, that's the Washington State Association of Building Officials, business meeting. To learn more about the legislation proposals with the building code updates. And the WUI code, which is the Washington Urban Interface Code.
Wildfire.
Wildfire, sorry. Here's, we're close. I'm still close.
Still close.
Yeah, her name's, you guys have to remember.
Learned a whole new language. I thought I learned one at DOC, but.
The building team also completed the last final inspection on the Woods Creek Highland Development. So this project added twenty-four new single-family homes to the city. Code enforcement cases for October, like I said, were up by ten resolved cases from September. And continuing to work with folks on campaign signage, getting that cleaned up. Looking at new business. Business license applications, some that may catch your eye, at least mine. At one oh-seven West Main Street, the Monroe Central Pub, that is the.
Good brewing.
It was good brewing. It was the Monroe Street Cafe. Is that what it was called?
Main Street Cafe.
Hareys?
Yeah.
So it has a sign for Hareys.
So now it looks like it's gonna be Monroe Central Pub next. Also a new tattoo shop in town, which I'm excited about. Yeah, no updates. Scrolling down, no updates to the comp plan or annexations. Questions?
Thanks very much, Hannah. Move on to discussion by commissioners and staff. I will start with the team folks. Start with Kelsey, please.
Wanted to say thank you to staff. Kate, that was awesome. Hannah, you're amazing. Lance, thank you. I had a great Thanksgiving. That's all I have to say. Thanks.
I'm glad. Thanks, Kelsey. Go with Liz.
Just, I agree with what Kelsey said. Thanks for the great.
Louder.
Staff. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, we can.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to say thanks for all the great presentations and the hard work the staff puts in, and that's all I got.
Thanks, Liz. Janelle?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right, just to echo what Liz said, thank you to all the staff, especially Kate and Hannah. That's all I got.
Thanks, Janelle. Jake?
Went to the tree lighting last night. It was awesome. Turned out was incredible. I want to give a shout out to staff. I just want to give Lance extra love because. Hannah and Kate, you guys are amazing and.
They do, they do all the work.
I'm just so grateful for you guys' willingness to take all my stupid questions, so appreciate you.
Absolutely.
For your questions, Kate, so no stupid. We just here for questions and discussion.
Appreciate that.
Randy?
I went to the tree lighting also. I just want to echo or repeat some of the comments that the mayor had, which were about. People supporting each other, communicating and connecting, and that's how we build community and help resolve problems and. Get on the same page about making plans for the future. So I thought that was pretty inspiring. And that the, again, like you said last year, the light of the tree is to represent that everybody's got the light inside of them. That helps to make the city right. So. For anyone that didn't hear that message, I thought it was pretty cool and I believe in it. And I. I'm not sure, you said we're gonna not have so many meetings, but I'm sure we're gonna have one before Christmas. So that's all I got.
I also attempted the light up in there last night. It was, it was the biggest crowd they'd ever seen out there. It went off without a hitch. Cause I know sometimes the timing is off on the countdown of the light. But it went off great last night and just cider and cocoa. My kids loved the reindeer antlers that they got from the. One of the booths there and the cookies and everything. It was just. The, and then there's little fire, little mini fire pits, so people could hopefully stay warm if they wanted to out there. And the kids were. So many kids were running around the park and it was really nice to see the community come together like that. I actually recorded what the mayor said, so maybe I'll look at that piece of it and upload it. Onto social media or something, because it was an inspirational little speech about the, the light and the darkness and stuff and community coming together. Other than that, I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday weekend. The trees looking beautiful with all the, the new festive lights going up around. There's more every day. So it's just always fun, joyful time for me and. For my kids and my family. I love it. So thank you, staff, as always, for the presentations and all the work you do. Learned a lot tonight and I just appreciate all the information and how easy it is to navigate, even though it's long packets sometimes. It's always very easy to navigate. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I went to the lighting ceremony, echoed everyone else's sentiments about the mayor's comments and. Also about Monroe fireplace being there, staff and the propane heat, you know, fireplace. It's always the trick to stay warm there. Went to Small Business Saturday in downtown, found parking, which was not my deal. Means there wasn't enough people down there. If I can easily find parking in downtown. So. I don't know what we do to get more folks shopping on Small Business Saturday in our downtown area, but I would. Love to figure it out and make it a hopping place. And, you know, that same vibe could happen at the lighting ceremony. Same sort of.
Same sort of kids, families downtown, whatever, you know, we can do to make that, you know. Cause planning commission spent a lot of time putting overlay there and trying to make downtown more vibrant and walkable and it's just unfortunate that there's just not a lot of, um, the bakery wasn't open and, you know, there's some vacant storefronts. There's the one golf place. I don't know how they are permitted to be there because, you know, they're by appointment only, you know, storefront, you know, it's basically black. Covering over that. It's not what we envisioned for more than a month. So.
Compilation on that one.
So I'm just saying that for walkability and for places to stop in and say hi and, and tea or whatever, that's not the kind of place we envision with the. That's just, thank you, thank you very much, staff. I love this sort of stuff, Kate. So very helpful for our future decisions making. Lance, what do you have for us?
I don't really have anything.
Thank you for joining us, Cindy.
Appreciate it. I just, I, this, the economic development stuff is something that I am real interested in. Among all of the. To exclude, yeah, but this one is particularly interesting.
Just your next meeting, um, you will be getting some draft documents, um, specific to the environment elements. Uh, we have some draft documents for you to review. That's it and that's it. Um, oh, the CAC meeting for, um, Randy and Jay. It will be in this room on December fourth from seven to nine PM. I will work with Zach tomorrow. I know there was a mishap on getting the reminder out. So I followed.
Anna?
I don't have anything besides I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving. I, for one, this year, I'm very thankful for my awesome job and my awesome bosses and the awesome planning commissioners I get to see twice a month, so. And thankful for cool new iPads.
Yeah, these were awesome.
Yeah. That's all.
Yeah, thanks for making this happen. This was great. Did anybody like to adjourn?
I knew that we adjourned the meeting.
I second.
Second by Randy. Commissioners in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, nobody's going. This is great. Thank you all. Appreciate it. Nice to have seven of us here. Thank you very much.
Bye.